Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America, an integrity public for which it stands, a nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. We are down one board member, Trisha Andrews, for not being attendants this evening. Before moving forward for approval of the agenda, are there any announcements that anyone has?
Oh, I have one. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Clarence Chamber recognized CSEF at their annual awards as the Organization of the Year. So that was quite an honor for the CSEF group, and they do so much with grants and special projects. We just recently helped partial funding for the Ledgeview Educational Pavilion. So we'd like to thank all the teachers, students, community members, Sam Haliba, who's in the audience today, for all the hard work towards the foundation.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, with that, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. All right, in our packets, we have the meeting minutes from both the general and executive session from February 10th. If there is no questions, if I could get a motion to approve the agenda or the meeting minutes?
Can I make a motion, Mike?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. That carries. We have no correspondents to note at this time. Brings us to the first of two public comment sessions for this evening. If anybody has anything they'd like to address to the board, again, this is the first of two. If you'd approach the microphone, appreciate that. As we're recording the meetings for the website, it's easier to pick up the voices if you're at the microphone, if you just state your name and address, and the floor is yours.
Sure. My name is Sam Haliba, 9710 Cobblestone Drive, Clarence. The reason I'm here tonight is I have a proposal to actually improve the academic performance of student athletes at no cost. So my proposal is to allow student athletes to receive phys ed credit for their participation in sports. This is not something that's unique to New York State. Other high schools are already doing this. And the sole purpose is to provide that student athlete that additional time during school for study hall or to seek assistance, whether it's tutoring, et cetera, while in the classroom, while in the school. Anecdotally, here's the problem. The problem is, and I'm going to use my son as an example. My son's a sophomore here. Next year, he's going to be a junior. He's going to be taking three AP classes. He's on the school's varsity volleyball team. He's on the school's varsity tennis team. Typically, and I'll use volleyball as an example, these students are getting home at 10:00 to 10:30 at night. And because of our somewhat busing issue, the varsity players are often forced to ride with the JV players. And you see them in the stands, in the bleachers, doing homework. Not really where I want my son, and I'm sure other parents don't want their sons and daughters, doing their homework in the bleachers. Not the right place to do it. Once again, other schools actually have this practice where they are noting phys ed credit by participation in sports. Now, one of the things, you know, a question comes, well, how do you measure this? How do you reconcile this? Well, if you look, even look at your policy, the 8240 policy that you're going to consider tonight, it actually shows giving credit hours for X number of hours of participation in phys ed. That is easily reconcilable whether you're going out for volleyball, football, basketball, or any of the sports offered here at Clarence High School. And it's easy to make that correlation. And certainly, it is, you know, offers this opportunity to improve the student athlete's academic position. My son, who's now a sophomore, is my fourth child. I have placed three kids through the Clarence system. They've done extremely well. They're all student athletes. They all had the same problem, okay? They were up till midnight, 12:30, at times 1:00 AM, because they were all taking AP classes because all three went to Cornell, okay? So they wanted to go into a good school, and they needed that additional time for academics for study. I understand this, the board requires a committee. I'd be more than happy to chair that committee. I'd be more than happy to serve on that committee to get this accomplished.
Thank you. You know, I'll speak for myself. Thank you for raising the issue. I think it's a valid concern. And as you noted, there's probably a lot of tentacles, if you will, as far as making sure that if we do make a policy change, we do so effectively and consider all relevant circumstance and parties involved, and maybe a committee would be appropriate. Does any other board member have any comments?
I'd like to see a committee put together to review this and report back to us.
I agree with that.
Anybody else have any comments? I see nodding to the head, so Dr. Hicks, if we could just ask that you facilitate an appropriate group to get together and look at the issue and report back to us?
We'll get at it, and we'll include Mr. Haliba.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi, Jonathan Andrews, 308 Berkeley Road. Just to tag on to what Mr. Haliba said, you know, I'm a numbers guy. I can't speak to the PE and the curriculum side. But what I liken it to is the curse of being smart, involved, and athletic. Those three things make for tired, excuse me, for tired children. So I can certainly understand his point in that regard. But that's not why I'm here tonight. As you'll notice, there is a empty seat at your board table tonight. And I'm going to go on record, I'm not right very often at home, but I told her not to come tonight. I told her her emotional state and my emotional state was not well enough to be here tonight. I'm going to try not to break down. We had a really bad weekend in the Andrews house. Really bad. Like, seek-therapy bad weekend. But she is so dedicated to this school and this board, she showed up tonight. And since no one else here will stand up for her, I'm here. I'm supposed to be home doing what he does, because I'm slow at it, putting the budget together. But I'm here because no one else will stand up for her. I'd like anybody on this board who has almost raised $100,000 for this school to raise their hand. Can anybody do it? Besides you? You know how many nights I lose coming to watch not-my-kid play a sport? Freeze at the football games? Sit till you can't walk at the basketball games? I have seen so many kids, not-my-kid, play an instrument in this school or sing a song because I get dragged to it by her. Everything she does is for this school and for this community. And how dare some of you make her feel subhuman on a regular basis? And the hardest part for me is, because she knows I know, a lot of this stuff happens in executive session. So I don't even know what the heck is going on. But when my wife comes home crying, heaving and sobbing, and you guys know who you are. You know who you are. And I don't know if it's a power trip. I don't know if you just hate women or you don't like to be challenged. But I made her a promise. I wouldn't swear. I wouldn't call people out by name. But I am here because nobody will stand up for her. Some of you on this board are supposed to be leaders. And you may disagree with her. But that gives you no right. And I wouldn't be able to live with myself if I didn't come here tonight. She's not here. Dr. Hicks, how many board meetings has Mrs. Andrews missed during her tenure?
Not many.
This would be two. Can any of else of you say that? Any of you who have been here? Two. And one of them is because she doesn't want to show her face to some of you tonight. It's got to stop. You know what? Some of you know me. I work for Star Point Schools. I'm the Rick Mancuso of Star Point. Come out to our board meetings and watch people who disagree treat each other civilly. It's an interesting dynamic when people are there to work as a collective instead of just being there to make sure that they can make themselves more powerful or feel better than other people. So I'm asking you, the leadership of this board, I don't want to see my wife come home crying anymore. She cares more about this school than you can possibly imagine. She volunteers still in the schools. She's on how many committees? So I'm asking you, the leadership of this board, to put a stop to it. If you disagree, that's fine. That's what adults do. Adults don't make other people feel subhuman. And with that, I will take my leave and go do my homework. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments at this time? That, Dr. Hicks, superintendent's report, please.
This will be our third budget report, and there hasn't been much movement in Albany, but there's a couple of things which are different. This is traditionally the month where we talk to you about enrollment. We'll also talk about our third budget draft and where things stand in the budget process. We'll also give you what's mandated by the state, which is a budget in three parts. And we always do five-year projections at this point as well. So there's one more budget meeting left where the Board of Education will adopt the budget, and that's in the early part of April. April 9th, I think. Six, sorry. Okay, so how are we doing on enrollment? Well, here's how things go with the enrollment study that we get through Mid-Cities. Our elementary enrollment is stabilized, and it's projected to increase slightly over the next four years. There's one grade level that is increasing more than slightly, and that's kindergarten. That would normally be very good news, but it's going to put us in a little bit of a staffing issue. The middle school enrollment's going to continue to decline by 10 to 15 kids per year for the next five years. It's already under 1,000 kids now. High school's going to decline by 40 to 45 kids per year over the next five years. Right now, there's about 1,500 kids in the high school. Our district overall enrollment will decline by 50 to 60 kids per year for the next five years. These are all trends that have been the same for the past three or four years. Next year's kindergarten is projected to be at about 335, and we were expecting it to be about 280. So if that trend continues, the elementaries will start to get larger, and then as those cohorts go through the middle school and the high school, we'll get a little bit big as well. But the smaller elementary enrollments are now rolling through the middle school and the high school, and for the next four or five years, we're going to see a smallish downward trend. So this should be in color, but it isn't. And it shows each grade level and how many kids there are. So when I first got to Clarence 10 years ago, we were graduating classes of about 400 kids. In just two or three years, we'll be graduating classes of about 300 kids. So there's a little bit of a change there. As far as the buildings themselves, the bottom of the stacked graph is the elementary schools, and you can see that it's going to end up going up over the five years. The middle white portion is the middle school, and the top portion is the high school. These are the projections that we do through our census because kindergarten is the biggest unknown for us every single year. So you can see where we have estimates for the number of kids in each kindergarten right now. And you can see that Ledgeview is a problem. We're not actually going to have class sizes of 33. That's just a marker to let you know where we stand. There are currently three sections of 5th grade at kindergarten. Normally, that would make three sections of incoming kinder, or I'm sorry, three sections of 5th grade at Ledgeview. That would mean three sections of kindergarten, but we already have 100 kids signed up. So we can't do three sections. They would be much too large. We're going to have to really do five sections of kindergarten. So somewhere, we're going to have to find two additional teachers. We can do that by taking a teacher from 6th grade, which, where the enrollment has gone down. We might also be able to do it by taking a teacher from Clarence Center in that 2nd grade where you see very small class sizes. We're going to continue to work this issue and see how it all turns out. But one thing we know for sure, we need more teachers at Ledgeview next year because the building is going to be larger, okay? Rest of the buildings are all in the normal class range. There might be a bubble here or there, and the high school and the middle school down slightly year over year. Some facts about Clarence and where we are as a community, because some of the variables that go into our enrollment projections have to do with birth rate and other things that happen in Clarence. So the total population this year was just under 32,000, and that trend has trended up for the past 10 years. The K through 12 population is 5790, and we don't have that many kids enrolled in the Clarence schools, so you can see we have many kids who enroll in private schools, and we transport them. The median age trending up, the total housing units trending up, the occupied households trending up. So there are still some build-outs to be created in Clarence, and we anticipate there will be an influx of kids from some of those build-outs. They are targeted mostly at Sheridan Hill and Harris Hill. So these are the approved subdivisions, but they're as yet unbuilt, and the school zone for the elementary where they would actually be. So Sheridan Hill has 225 lots, still unbilled, Ledgeview 200, Harris Hill 48, Clarence Center 10. The potential growth for the children in that area, and this information we get from Jim Callahan at the town of Clarence, Sheridan Hill and Ledgeview, about 100 kids each, Harris Hill about 20 kids, Clarence Center about six kids. If these trends continue, then we'll have to think about redrawing some boundaries in the future. Right now, we're okay, but Clarence Center is our smallest school by a bunch, and at some point, it gets to be too small, and other schools get to be too large, and we have to redistribute. But that doesn't have to happen next year. Okay. So that's the enrollment stuff, as detailed as we've given it to the board in the past. Our goals for the 2021 budget, maintain or improve all existing programs and don't make any reductions to staff. So the budget that we gave you in January, the budget that we gave you in February, has those parameters met. We are rolling over all existing positions, and we are trying to maintain all of the programs that we have in place. The fiscal reality is, the capped tax levy alone does not provide us enough funds to maintain existing programs, and the governor's budget doesn't give us enough state aid to balance our programs. So we're doing what we've done over the past couple of years. We're dipping into our fund balance and making more of an appropriation as a revenue to the 2021 school year in order to make up the difference. So expenses for next year, here's our assumptions. We're about 3% in wages for all of our employee groups. We have about a 1% to 2% increase in health insurance costs. That's because we are self-funded, and we do extraordinarily well here, much better than the community rate. About a 2% increase in special education costs, that's something that's happened the past eight or nine years. 2% increase in BOCs, 2% in everything else, and our retirement costs increase, but not as large as we originally gave you. In the January and February budget, we put numbers in that were reflective of the highest possible pension cost. It didn't come in that high. So there's a little bit of additional dollars there, and we'll talk to the board a little bit later about what you can do with that, okay? Our debt service is stable at this point, and it's really not having an impact on the levy. On the revenue side, our total tax levy cap number, the total number is 2.99%. So that 2.99% yields us about $1,500,000. We need about $2.5 million to go from one year to the next and not have any reductions. So all other revenues are going to increase by about $1,000,000, and a $518,000 increase by combining state aid and Medicaid funding as well, okay? So we're going to balance the gap again by appropriating fund balance monies. It is possible that the state could give us some additional state aid by the time the state budget is completed on April 1st or so. It's not likely, however, because the fortunes of the state are tied to Wall Street. It hasn't been a very good week or a couple of weeks, and if things keep tanking, the governor may repropose numbers that are smaller. Now, in order for us to know that, he'd have to do that by April 1st. So if they're going to make changes to the executive budget, and this is kind of unprecedented territory with the coronavirus and the stock market crash, they would have to do so really quickly. So we're going to budget for the executive budget numbers and not count on any additional state aid, which is our conservative way of doing things that normally is good. So here's something for the board to consider. Our initial estimate of pension system expenses was about $200,000 higher than necessary. So what can we do with those funds? Well, there's really, in our mind, two options. One, we can reduce the amount of appropriated fund balance that we put in the 2020, 2021 budget. Fiscally, that's a good thing because it keeps that fund balance at a smaller level. And once we put it in, we have to continue to put it in every year. Or we can keep the budgeted appropriated fund balance the same, and we'd have enough money with that $200,000 to hire about three positions. So what do we need out of those three positions? Well, if you ask anyone in the district, what they'll tell you is we need more mental health supports for kids. So what could that be? That could be psychologists, that could be social workers, that could be additional people for our family support center, it could be many different things, okay? We know there's some classroom teacher needs. We know we're going to need at least two teachers at Ledgeview. We might be able to get them from within the system, and we'll know better in about two or three weeks. We know we're going to need another special education teacher at the middle school. This wasn't originally budgeted for. It came up as a result of annual reviews. It's something that we're going to need to do legally. Can we move a teacher from one place to another to the middle school? We're still looking at that potential possibility. And then again, you know, we could hire additional cleaners or support staff or things like that with the $200,000. So the board does not have to decide tonight on what to do with that, with those dollars. Rick, can you chime in on that?
Sure. The money, it just remains flexible in the budget. So if we don't want to lower the budget and lower the appropriated balance, we want to just keep those funds in the budget. It works out very well because, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, kindergarten is fluctuating. We're in the middle of kindergarten roundup. Things change quite a bit. So we may be able, like he mentioned, to move some teachers. No reason to make a decision faster than you might need to on what additional positions to add. Also, if we do it this way and keep that flexible money in the budget, if we do get a little bit of additional state aid, it will have the same effect as us slightly lowering our appropriated balance. So there's no need to change the budget, and that would also assist us going forward.
As far as identifying funds in the budget, just playing out what you were saying, we have to earmark it as a salary line item to allow you the flexibility, or just in the budget in general?
You can just leave it exactly the way it is, and as we tighten up or as the budget gets approved, then you know that there's flexibility in there to appoint people. As Dr. Hicks mentioned with the special education needs, by not making a decision. Now, we do need to also push it a little bit as far as deadlines go. You don't know what else would come up.
Do we know at this point how many retirements we have, and were those calculated into the figure?
Right. So we were counting on four. We have four. There's a potential of one more additional. Okay, I'm just going to keep rolling, all right? So how do we figure out the tax cap number? Well, the first number is the allowable state growth factor. In other words, what's the cost of living increase from last year to this year? That is 1.81%. So every school district in the state starts with that number. Then, at Clarence, we're lucky enough to have new builds, both commercial and residential property, so that allows us to put another 1.18% on the total cap number. We also would get exclusion for previously approved debt service. That's not in this year. It will be in in future years, but you add those things together, and our cap number is 2.99%, okay? Couple of things. What's the difference between levy and rate? Well, the tax levy is the amount of money that we raise via property taxes, which is about 70% of our budget, Rick?
Yes.
Okay? That's a revenue in the school budget. The levy is determined by subtracting the total spending number from all the other sources of revenue. Whatever's left is the tax levy. Then it gets spread across all of the taxable properties in the town of Clarence and the three other towns that make up our school district. So the tax rate is a dollar per thousand number that's needed to raise the total tax levy. And the rate is determined by dividing the total assessed value of the four towns by the total tax levy to be raised. And our total assessed value in the four towns is close to $3.5 billion, Rick, okay? So that's a lot, and that's why our rate is low. Even for next year, our projected rate is $14.18,000, and it's likely to end up lower than that, okay? I'm going to say that that is the lowest, if not tied for the lowest, rate in Erie County. Normally, we publicize a tax rate with the budget in April. When you actually set the tax rate in August, it ends up being lower. So here are the past 20-some-odd years. The number we published in April has always been lower than the actual tax rate when you set it in August. Go ahead, Mike.
Since you have the slide up.
Yeah.
Just to ask a question and reinforce an observation, I guess. So building on the tax, taxable value increase that we expect through the town growth factor, what is on this presentation, that is the $14.18 per thousand, that is a 2% increase, not a 2.99. So the effective rate taxpayers will experience is closer to 2 and likely under 2.
Yep.
Because of the town growth.
Absolutely. The town growth factor is true growth. It's not people whose assessment might have increased. It are, it is strictly properties that weren't on the ones last year. So it is a true growth factor, and that's where that 2.99 will drop down. The town growth factor is about that 1.18, and so that is correct. An average taxpayer will have a 2% proximate increase in their taxes.
It could be lower.
And I guess the other question I have, and on the slides, I mean, we tend to come in under, the years that we've been significantly under, the town has done a reassessment. Is there any indication that they're planning one this year?
I think it was, I think it's Lancaster that is doing a large assessment change, but not Clarence, which Clarence is the driver, actually, for us.
Okay, thank you.
Right. As far as we know, no massive reassessments this year like there were a couple of years ago. Okay. So what does this mean in terms of real dollars in people's bank accounts? Well, we have three different homes here at $14.18 per thousand. $100,000 home would pay an annual increase of about $28 in taxes. A $200,000 home, $56. A $300,000 home, $84, okay? So that's as low as it's been in quite a number of years. So again, the budget total is actually what the board will vote on in April. And then we can finagle around with some things as long as the total is there. But the budget total is $85.6 million for night, for this year. Add to that the levy plus the other revenue, and next year's budget total is $88.2 million. So again, you don't have to designate every dollar in the budget, and we can hold those positions open until we get a little bit more, little bit more clarity on special education and kindergarten, and then you can make some decisions about mental health supports or anything else, okay?
When do you expect that clarity to come?
I would say by the summer. I would say by the summer. Okay? But we're recommending you vote for the $88.2 million. All right? And that you set the tax levy at the actual cap number, not under the cap number. Okay? So we have to do this three-part budget, and it shows you the difference between last year and this year in three big chunks. Administration is the district office, administrators, curriculum and supervision, liability and property insurance, and the benefits for those people, and it's up about $230,000. The capital expense is operations and maintenance, everything having to do with transportation, and that is up about $183,000. Then the program part of the budget is regular ed, special ed, transportation and benefits. That's up about $2.1 million. So it's just about the same percentage for each one of these elements as it was last year. So we're required by law to provide this, and this information, along with other critical information, will be in the budget newsletter. We're putting it together. As soon as you guys pass the budget and approve it, we will send it out. Okay? So, Rick, I'm going to have you do the five-year. Okay?
What we like to do is we make some assumptions, and that's listed right underneath the chart. And what we want to do is, at this point in time, make sure that the board realizes that what we're proposing is going to have some sustainability. That's the biggest reason to do a long-term plan. So what we've done is we've projected with those parameters, about 3% in wages, 4% in benefits, a couple percentage points in the contractual and supply areas, and for BOCs and special ed. We projected the expenses going ahead five years along that plan. We then take the next slide, the revenue slide, and we do the same thing. We take some assumptions. We know that conservatively, 2% is what sales tax is going up each year. Our local revenues are remaining pretty flat. We are taking our fund balance, and we do have the debt reserve. So for a couple of years, we've kept that at the 2.5 million level, and then we have put it down. And then the same thing with state aid. State aid is a wild card. In a normal, perfect year, a 2% or 3% increase in state aid would be very sustainable. We've got 3% in there, and if you compare the revenues to the expense projections, under these parameters, they match pretty well going forward. However, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, state aid is something that we have to be very mindful of. We cannot, if state aid keeps coming in at less than a 1% increase, we cannot balance budgets with just fund balance.
So state aid is going to, in total, it's about $22 million in our budget.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Everything else is sales tax or levy on people's homes. So, we also are recommending, and we put this in the second budget presentation, we're recommending replacements for our buses. Six buses this year, three of the big ones without compartments, three of the big ones, or two of the big ones with compartments, one wheelchair, 35-passenger, total $663,000. No impact on the levy, because we've been doing this in a cycle for five years. Okay? And finally, we've held three different meetings on the budget. The adoption will take place on April 6th. The actual drop dead date is, I think, April 20th. Is that correct, Rick? So if something came up, if the state was in limbo, if the state has not yet passed their budget, we could call a special board meeting for April 20th and have you vote then. But for the most part, April 6th is when you're going to have to call the question. Then, May 4th will be our budget hearing for the community, even though we've done many of these, we have to do that by law. And the 19th is the public budget vote across the entire state. Seven to nine at the high school gym, there's two propositions. One is the budget, the other is the buses. And there are three Board of Ed seats that will be run for this year. So that concludes the superintendent's report unless the board has any questions.
Just, it's more of a comment than anything else, but I mean, the state's contribution to us being so volatile, and I wanted to just ask about the appropriated fund balance. I know we've been trying to be very cautious about that. I don't personally see a concern about, like, adjusting the amount, the amount of the budget as a whole, but just from a, you know, funding expectation, I mean, how close are we to a line that we really don't want to cross? Because I remember, you know, kind of the, one of the last budget crises that we all had to kind of deal with one way or another, was because we ratcheted back and got to a more sustainable appropriated fund balance. You know, how close are we to that line? Because when we're going into state uncertainty, I really, I think there's a lot of risk there.
We're fairly close. I'd say 3 million is the absolute outside marker. Rick?
Yeah, well, I think Dr. Hicks is correct. We're really pushing the edge now. If you, if you remember how you get the fund balance, is you under-expend a little bit, and that's the main way to do it. Every department, every administrator, obviously district-wide, health coverage, there's a lot of things that go into the budget. If we save 2%, and that's all we need to save, on our, on our budget, we'll have close to what we're doing. Those are numbers that we don't want to go over much. We're at 2.8 with the $2.5 million. That's 2.8% of our budget. If we got close to that 3, that's about the most we think we can recover in every year. Everybody knows that you can't overspend your budget. That's why every department, every administrator who has got some budget responsibility stays conservative, and that's where we recover that 2% each year.
So, just to follow up on that then, I mean, as we're, I know we don't have to make a choice now, and I think it's prudent that we wait as long as we can, but when we're starting to think about potential positions versus appropriated fund balance, I think that's going to be something we have to be extremely careful about, given the volatility.
Yes, and we'll give you a recommendation in April as well, when we have a little bit more information. Obviously, we want to do the best things for our kids, and we think the mental health supports are a big deal, and if we can afford them, we'd recommend to put them in.
Should, should something occur between now and the summer, which is basically what Dr. Hicks said, is a good timeframe to make some of those decisions, something should occur adversely at the state funding level. By not filling the vacant positions, in essence, we would be lowering the appropriated balance.
Thank you.
I just want to build on Mr. Stock's comments. You know, I think, given the state of the state's fiscal situation, what we've historically been seeing from a aid increase here over your perspective, I think there's risk. In the five-year projection, I understand it's an assumption. You can only make an assumption, and you made the assumption before today. But as far as looking at the 3.2% tax cap calculation, I think is optimistic, because it assumes the 2% CPI, which we're under this year. The way this year is going to trend, it's highly unlikely we'll get to 2% this coming year. And then the state is, as Dr. Hicks pointed out, is heavily dependent upon Wall Street income generating bonus taxes. So, you know, there's, there's obviously a lot of risk. So that being said, I recognize the shortfall in our mental health area guidance, psychologists, and/or social workers. And over the course of a number of years, you, you, the district has provided the board with a lot of comparative charts relative to other districts. We are sorely lacking compared to other districts, largely due to the budget crisis we had a number of years ago, and how we've been able to cobble back and prioritize. You know, by my accounts, I mean, we're probably six positions short to get to an average compared to whatever, what other people have. I'm not saying their numbers are correct, but it speaks to the disparity. So I'm obviously supportive of if we can adding back positions, but I think we need to be mindful on the, on whether we can afford and sustain a position. Once you commit to a salary, you commit to somebody's livelihood, and you want to make sure that that funding is there. So that's, that being said, I guess one thing I would, would ask as we move forward and we have to make those decisions, so if we're supportive of a, at least for me, if we're supportive of a revenue number, or, I'm sorry, an expense number, we make a determination how we spend that money as we move forward, I think that the challenge I would push back on the district is, is there, if these are the priorities, are there other things that are less of a priority today, and can we make some trade-offs?
I also would just like to add that I think that we should look at the carryover money to see if that can be better spent in terms of staffing. There's quite a bit of funding there, and that is not money that we're going to lose. It's always going to be there. So we could, in fact, add a couple social worker positions and still have that money there. Looking at the actual end-of-year carryover, there are several items that I definitely would cut to get a social worker.
Any other questions or comments by the board?
Just one, I guess, final question. Relative to the bus purchases, I know we've kind of, we've gotten to the point where we're on an annual cycle, so we've positioned it that it's tax-neutral. One, the old borrowing rolls off, new borrowing rolls on. Based on my recollection, we've been more in the $900,000 range, so theoretically, is there a slight reduction in the tax levy with this purchase cycle?
You know, it won't with this year, because the way the bottlings go, it takes two years for this one to hit the books or the other one to fall off. But there will be, but it ends up being not really beneficial to the budget, because then it takes the tax cap and alters it by the same amount. So we really don't have much of a play there. This year, there are a couple of less buses that we're recommending, but we only want to purchase or recommend to purchase what we really need. You know, so some buses are lasting longer, and we only need the six this year.
Thank you.
So just one last thing. We're going to continue to lobby with our legislators. We have a meeting with Assemblymen Norris, and I sent the board the date if anybody wants in on that, and we're still trying to get Senator Razzanhofer as well. So we'll see, we'll keep a really close eye on the state stuff. The last time the state made a mid-year cut was 1990. That would be extraordinarily bad for us. If they were going to make a cut, we'd rather they made a cut right now so that we can plan for it in the next budget. Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mancuso, shall we move into finances?
Sure. The only thing I want to mention on the December financials and the attached note is that this is the last meeting if we do want, if the board wants to make a nomination for someone to run for the BOCs board. The next item, we do have the...
We have no takers.
The annual budget notice, you know, so this lists the proposition for the buses at $670,000. The difference in the actual bus purchase is the financing costs that go along with it, and that there are three board seats up for election and for our budget hearing for May 4th. Standard notice. It goes in the paper April 1st, April 15th, April 29th, and May 13th. And then the last item is appointing the inspectors of election and Ms. Marla Weiss to be the chairperson of the vote.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Mancuso? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve finance items F1 through F4?
Make a motion.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. Thank you. Instructional personnel, Mr. Show.
For your approval this evening, we have four retirements. Each of those employees served our district for over 20 years. Approval for one employee for mentor training. P3 contains presentation compensation for professional development. P4 has all the salary adjustments for staff who have completed additional coursework, either for certification or for skill enhancement. P5 then has the additions and deletions for our substitute list.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on items P1 to P5? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Non-instructional?
Non-instructional. P6 is termination of employee under Section 71 of the New York State Civil Service Law. We have six resignations, two of which are for retirement purposes, a request for an unpaid leave of absence, also a request for an extension of an unpaid leave of absence. We have a total of seven appointments this month: two teacher aides, one clerical, one monitor, one bus attendant, and two cleaners. P11 is just an informational item of a transfer between buildings. And P12 has the additions and deletions for the non-instructional substitute list. The addendum in front of you is a recommendation to the board for ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between the district and the CSEA. Some highlights of that contract, it's a three-year contract, 2.9% wage increase each year. The CSEA will have additional contributions to health insurance each year, and increased amounts in the co-pay structure. We cleaned up some language throughout the contract to make things clearer, and redesigned the longevity schedule to help retain staff.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on non-instructional? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve P6 to P13?
Some.
I have a first and a second. Could I get a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. Special needs and student activities.
We're entering the zone of annual reviews. So there were 45 Committee on Special Education meetings last month, 14 preschool. There will be hundreds more before we hit the end of the year, and there's nothing unusual in these.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve special needs and student activities, items S1 and S2?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. All right, board development?
We're recommending the 2021 school calendar that the board approve. One caveat, the state sends us a spreadsheet because the total number of days is not as important as the total number of hours over the last couple of years. We have it calculated so that we're well over the number of hours needed for elementary and secondary, but this particular calendar starts really late and ends a little early. So there's not a lot of days between Labor Day and the end of the school year when we end Regents exams. We're going to bring the staff in on September 1st before Labor Day. We're going to bring the kids in on the day after Labor Day, and we haven't done that for a couple of years. So we're squished. We will not have an extra day at Thanksgiving, nor will we have an extra day for Memorial Day weekend.
And I also see that after the state law changed last year, where we had a late calendar change, we have Election Day as a conference day.
Right. We're using Election Day as an automatic teacher conference day because we're unsure as to how many people will need to take three hours off to vote, which is the new law.
Would you like a vote on them individually?
I can keep on rocking if you're...
Keep going.
Policy, 8,000, third read-through, has to do with instructional stuff. There are many things in there. The changes that we're recommending are mostly legal in nature. Also, privacy and security for student data is a brand-new policy, just received from Policy Services this past week. In order for us to complete our technology plan, you have to approve it. There already is a policy on privacy and security for student data. This just puts the new variables into it. So we're asking for the first read-through tonight and the vote on it next month.
So next month for policy 5676 is sufficient to get approval next month? Does anybody have any questions or comments on the 2021 calendar or the 8,000 section of the policy?
Just a comment that the 8,000 policies were my favorite so far.
No other comments or questions? If I could get a motion to approve items B1 and B2? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. All right. We have a second public comment session if anyone would like to address the board. You're welcome to approach the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Michaela Lauer. I live at forty-five hundred Patricia Drive. So I apologize first for being late. Family obligation. I'm a parent, I wrote this down because this is gonna seem lengthy, but believe it or not, it's shortened quite a bit. So I'm a parent of four children, three of which currently in the district. As much as I would prefer to never speak publicly, I do feel obligated to do so tonight. It's become apparent that the general public and parents of Clarence District are unaware that our children are not receiving the same care and support as other districts in Western New York. While they certainly have every academic and extracurricular activity, our children are at a great disadvantage due to the grossly understaffed pupil personnel services department. The pupil personnel services department consists of our committed counselors and psychologists. This is a department charged with the extraordinary task of making sure our children's schedules are arranged, learning needs and special education requirements are met, prepared for graduation and college preparation, as well as all of their social, emotional, and mental health needs. There is an entire profession absent from this department, which is present in most districts. We have zero social workers in our district. It's been said to me on more than one occasion, the district has decided to utilize counselors and especially psychologists in place of social workers because they can do all of the same tasks as a social worker, plus complete all of their tasks, especially at the elementary level, since the sole pupil personnel is a psychologist in each building. It's also been said that although we're understaffed, we now have a family support center to help meet the needs of the children who require more assistance. In addition to being a parent of four children, I also happen to be a school social worker in a nearby district. I'd like to briefly share just a few of the tasks that happen in my day. I start my day maybe following up with a student whose family had just had child protection called on them for using a belt as discipline. Meeting with a teacher to revamp the approach with a student who is not responding appropriately or positively to the classroom management plan. Running a group of, with kindergartners who are dealing with anxiety. Speaking with a law guardian because court just let out, and there's a major change in custody that now I need to inform the student with at the end of the day with the law guardian. Meeting for a weekly appointment with a student who's suffered severe trauma and has outside counseling but also needs support inside school. Meeting with a student who just got the news that the night before their parents are getting divorced. Getting called down to the first-grade wing because a student with impulsivity control struggles has flipped a desk and is now hiding under it and will not come out. Speaking on the phone with a parent who I worked with last year, but just realized they need to be putting down their family dog, and they're wanting some advice of how to handle this difficult situation with their children. Lastly, pushing into a third-grade classroom to teach a weekly social skills lesson. The list can go on and on. You'll notice that not one task I mentioned involved evaluating the academic needs of a student, sitting in a CSE meeting for hours, interpreting rating scales provided by a doctor, writing reports to prepare for a student to receive special education, planning with the family to tour BOSI's classroom because the student's needs are no longer met in the classroom. None of those things were mentioned because the full-time psychologist sitting in the office next door to me is completing those class, tasks, so I can complete mine. You'll also notice that none of the things I would mention here require referral to the family support center or to an outside agency. Instead, these tasks require immediate attention with readily-available staff members who has relationships established with teachers, students, and families in that building. The family support center is a fantastic resource that came out of our safety task force as a way to immediately handle the needs since we are so understaffed. However, it is in no way a substitute for an employee in a building to address these needs. Clarence psychologists and counselors have picked up the tasks of what a social worker is typically hired to do. That does not mean it's a great solution. It means that for now, we have staff that are willing to do the job of two, sometimes three, employees, depending on which building we're discussing. We are stretching our psychologists very, very thin. I mean this in regards to their ability to be effective due to time constraints as well as their burnout potential. Being understaffed at all levels also means that our middle and high school students are not able to receive the support that they require. With school shootings and suicide rates of our nation's teens, it should be impossible to argue against the need for these important supports. There was a time when Clarence had social workers as part of the pupil personnel department. The budget cuts of years ago caused many districts, including Clarence, to cut the positions of social workers in the district. The distinct and shameful difference that sets Clarence apart is that the other districts found a way to work those critical positions back into the budget while Clarence has failed to do so. I spoke here a couple of years ago in regards to the lack of social workers in our district in comparison to almost all surrounding districts. But it is critical to make the distinction that the surrounding districts do not have social workers instead of psychologists. They have them in addition to psychologists and counselors. Our surrounding districts are progressing rapidly in regards to meeting the social and emotional needs of their students. By not having social workers in the middle and high school and not adding a social worker or a counselor at the elementary level, our district has regressed instead of progressed, like our counterparts. It's my hope that there be a strategic plan to move forward with additions in the budget each year until we are fully staffed. Meeting the social and emotional needs of our children is critical, and not doing so can have catastrophic results. Our Clarence counselors and psychologists have done a tremendous job of enduring the demands that have been placed on them. It's time that we make these demands manageable. It's time that we put as much emphasis on our children's social, emotional health as we do on their academics. It's time we make the increase of pupil personnel services in Clarence a priority. Our counselors and our psychologists deserve more, and most importantly, our children deserve more.
Thanks for your time. Anybody else that I could have had? Hey, John, in our package, we have a scheduled upcoming meeting. No reference to the Dr. Hicks, it's our next board meeting where borrowing... The budget for the next school year. That'll be at seven p.m. this very morning. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Fuchs, just one thing. The coronavirus has been a big deal in and around the district in getting information. We just received at about five o'clock this afternoon additional guidance from New York State. There will be another letter tomorrow morning that will get out to all parents and community members on what, on any additional things we know. Right, first thing tomorrow morning.
Mike, I'd just like to acknowledge that I believe everybody in that row are pupil personnel staff members, correct? I just wanted to compliment the negotiating teams of the district and the CSEA for how efficiently they settled the contract. I think it's a testimony of good faith on how our district handles business.
Any kind of motion to adjourn? Have a second?
Second? Aye.